Twenty five, planning board meetings call to order.
Yeah, I got it.
This to advise that notice time, date, location, and to the extent known agenda of the subject meeting was prominently posted in public places. There for such as similar announcements on November sixth, two thousand twenty five, transmitted to the Times of Princeton, Paken and West Windsor and Plainsboro News on November sixth, two thousand twenty five. Followed township clerk on November sixth, two thousand twenty five. Please call her all.
Mr. Patel. Mr. Lavaro.
Yes.
Mr. Sheckt Tal. Mr. Pankov.
Yes.
Mr. Beg.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Applecat, Councilman Whitfield. Mayor Marta, Vice Chairman Huberman.
Here.
Chairman Carr.
Here. We have a call. Thank you. Just one really quick comment that I have. I just want to wish Rob Lovero happy birthday. His birthday was this week. I think he's thirty nine now. Okay.
And Mr. Sheckt Tal has arrived.
Uh, yeah, and Mr. Beg. Mr. Sheckt Tal and Mr. Beg are here. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the public for comments on non-agenda, non-pending items. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Okay, see none. Next order of business, minutes from October, minutes from October fifteenth, and now it's working. October fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, any changes, amendments, clarifications? As usual, Tricia did a great job. Anybody? Nope.
Motion to approve the minutes of October fifteenth.
We hear a second. Somebody, second by Rob. Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it's staying, okay.
It stayed.
Okay, so you have the abstains. Okay, great. Thank you.
Rob, it pretty much was up to you and me and Michael, too.
Okay. Uh.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And is anything on environmental commission report?
On the report, I think there are a few items. Uh, there were quite a few public members, usually, but they attended this meeting. One of the members, Mr. Alay Dantoo Burne, he expressed concern about the leaves stacked up on the on the side streets.
I'm sorry, say again.
The leaves.
Oh, leaves, yeah.
Stacked them on the streets, okay? It's upside and he's concerned that cause traffic problem. When rain comes, not the banks, you know. So we're suggesting that to they get to be shredded, crushed, maybe mulched, either fertilizer. But we may have a presentation next meeting of what he proposed. One of the girl scout would like township to provide space for from their township authority for following it or guide us. And she has a partner to work with.
Okay.
It's probably a girl scout project.
Yeah.
It's probably to get her gold star or whatever the equivalent is.
Uh, number three, what this girl that township support to provide more street lights and brighter lights. I think Frank had some discussion on that one in the last meeting. Our natural law updates, item the Gushi then issue was coming up, that I thought in the draft auditions will be proposed to the council in January of next year. And how we are going to enforce it, that's different story. Uh, the township for environmental engineer is working on the purpose of it.
Okay.
Cat lowers, still there issue going on, and this discussed so many times. EC will like to have auditors to make use of cat cats towards. There's still no finalized, what that but we team discussed, particularly empty every time, every meeting. A mayor had signed an agreement for the partnership, the sustainable journey to promote P S E N G, energy savings programs for Westminster residents. This agreement includes twenty five hundred dollars grant covering expenses promoted in the program. So they already signed and agreed on this agreement. Uh, there was a meeting yesterday about a dungeon, I believe, for sustainable journey for EC members. I could not attend uh to for the silver qualification that the township received. Uh, one of the EC member, he presented a good presentation about the AI tools and municipalities. And here long presentation, summary, the cities use AI to improve services, ease costs and repair and respond faster, for example, chat boards for others' questions to manage traffic and infrastructure, automated permitting and services requirement. And AI can do much more than what I just said. And what he said that allow receive of the AI was there since nineteen seventy. But due to limited computer uh space or what I call memory would not be implemented till last few years.
Okay, thank you.
Asked it, any questions? Thank you.
Actually, I have a question regarding gas powered leaf blowers.
Yes.
So people want, it's too noisy, right? So people.
Yeah, that must be.
They want everything, they want electric.
And they, I think uh, Princeton Township has some kind of ordinance on the use of the gas blowers. The pandemic
Time, okay.
For one to one.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that maybe may come back from the EC and the draft proposal resolution, okay, and then council have to decide.
Okay. Uh, converting everything over to electric is a big deal, so. Okay.
Now there are battery powered also, you know.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
On the our, most of the loans in our, mine, but also some of this.
You should pave everything over, then you don't need, you don't need it.
Yeah.
Sweep it up.
That's a lot of impervious coverage.
Not we have the school. Uh, okay.
Um, okay, thank you. Joyka, anything on portable housing?
The last meeting was on October second. Um, there's a ongoing maintenance work handled. And the candidate representative, Mr. Surly, reported that the rest of here happening with the progress of the maintenance work and um, but some good news, so much of the long time has been in control.
Right.
So I thought I'd involve that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. So for the applications tonight, they're all courtesy reviews, and so there'll be no vote on what's presented. Just wanted to make sure we're, everybody's aware of that, and no resolution. Uh, first up is PV twenty four, dish oh six, West Windsor Parking Authority, former bus garage, courtesy review.
Did. Would be more. Just gross, yes. Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Hall. I am with the firm of Schaeferman, Lake and but Umstein and Blatter. I'm here as conflict counsel. Paul Bishop is conflicted out because his firm represents the zoning board of adjustment. And therefore, the parking authority retained me to present the application or the review tonight.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat your name again?
Yes, Jeffrey Hall, H I L L.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard picking you up. Sam, can it be raised? There you go, yeah.
Okay, is this better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. As you mentioned, this is a courtesy review under chapter thirty one of the municipal land use law, uh, which requires this review as a result of uh, action by this board concerning the master plan. And the parking authority is proposing a project that will construct forty one parking spaces uh, and also a pocket park at the corner of Wallace Road and Princeton Heights Town Road. Uh, the property, the question is block fifty nine, lots one and two, and it's about nine tenths of an acre. The pocket park will, will consist of covered seating areas, public picnic benches and landscaping improvements are intended to screen an electrical substation, which is in vicinity. As the board is undoubtedly aware, in April of this year, you amended the master plan to include this project basically, and then went through a zoning amendment that was adopted, and I think became effective in June of this year. So this both meets the redevelopment plan as well as zoning for the property. Uh, the parking authority will be leasing this property from the township. Uh, so they will be presenting two witnesses and perhaps a third if there are comments relating to landscaping. Uh, our witnesses are going to be Andy Lupo, who's the chair of the parking authority, and Reese Nordine. Was the project engineer from ACT Engineers. Uh, Andy will discuss the history and background of the parking authority and lay the foundation, basically, it's a public entity, which I think we all know, but I guess for the record, we'll present that, and then uh, Reese will discuss the, the plans, go over the board uh, professionals' comments, and then answer any questions of the board, the professionals, and the public, if the public's invited to ask questions. So with that, I would bring up Andy Lupo. Andy, take this sign.
Try to go lower for me. Thank you all. Appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you. As you know, the parking authority was established in nineteen seventy one as an independent authority of the township. Back in two thousand twelve, we worked with the township in taking the old toxic dump site and creating Upper Vaughn. Uh, and that was, uh, working with DEP, and that was a great win for the township. And we're always looking for opportunities to see some additional parking for the parking authority, especially with the housing that's going on in town. When we looked at the bus garage, we immediately talked to township administration with the help of the mayor, Marlena, Francis, Sam. We were able to move forward with the plan to try to work with Amtrak and remediate the contamination that's in the soil there, and then to turn that into the pocket park and parking that we're discussing tonight. So from our point of view, I think you all know the parking authority, you know me, open to other questions later, but I will turn it over to Reese right now.
Just a quick question, Andy, this is next to the permit, Wallace permit.
It's close. There's a, there's a Amtrak electrical station, substation between the bus garage, and then it's the Wallace daily lot, which is a New Jersey Transit lot. Then we have the semi-circle, uh, right in front of the, the terminal, and then we have the Wallace permit lot, which is a West Windsor lot. So this would be another West Windsor lot for us.
I'm Reese Nordine. I'm, I have over ten years of experience as a site civil engineer. I've graduated TCNJ in twenty fourteen with a civil engineering bachelor's degree. Um, I'm licensed in New Jersey, and my license is in good standing. I'm also licensed in four other states. Uh, I've worked on hundreds of projects, including stormwater design, um, site grading, utility zoning, roadway design. Uh, projects that I've worked on have included both new development and redevelopment, a mix of resident, residential and commercial developers as well, as well as projects for municipalities and nonprofits. I've provided engineering testimony in front of several different zoning and planning boards, including Board in Town, Chesterfield, Commercial Township, and Trenton. Yeah, so some of this has already been spoken about. The existing condition of the, the site is currently a municipal bus garage. It's gra, mostly gravel, um, right now, that was being used as bus parking and storage. It's nine tenths of an acre. Blocks fif, block fifty nine, lots one and two are both owned by the township, and there's also a portion of the, the site is uh, just within the township's right of way. Yes, that's what Wallace, it's, it's, uh, in front of Wallace Road, and there's two driveway entrances from Wallace. It's on the corner of Wallace Road and Princeton Heights Town, Princeton Heights Town's on the west side of, of the property. And Wallace Road is south of it. Behind the, the property to the northwest is an electrical substation, and north of the property is uh, Amtrak training facility. Um, to the east is the Ellsworth Shopping Center, and south is the PNC Bank.
Uh, but as you did, existing conditions, the, the building closest to the tracks, not part of the site, your site, but is to remain, correct?
The building.
And that building functions as, and will function as what?
To remain, yep.
And what, what is the function of that building?
I believe it's a training facility that they.
Say it again?
So it's a separate lot.
Yeah, correct, but what's the function of such building?
I, I believe they train their workers to, I don't know exactly.
Andy sounds like he knows. With trailer, it looks like a, a one-story frame building. That's what the, the survey says. Okay. No, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there easily on the property for Amtrak to access?
No, uh, they, they.
They get to it.
They, the.
Right away. Hence, uh, it will, there will need to be a, needs for them to access it. They are having to go with the township's father to, to get to their entrance. But currently, they just stay in Wallace Road's right way.
And having traced that line that you just did, do, do they have trucks going to and from that site? That would go through this, the site we're talking about tonight?
So I wouldn't think trucks, just like smaller cars, but.
So driving radiuses are not an issue?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Right, and, and to follow up on Curtis' point, so if all the parking spaces are filled, would a small truck or an SUV be able to go through?
Looks a little narrow. Part of what we're proposing is a fence with a secure gate so that only Amtrak people would be able to access their property.
Yeah, 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 but the problem, the issue, the issue I'm raising is that so an Amtrak person, he has the authority to go and use that facility, and he has a pass to get, make the gate open. But he drives a Suburban or, you know, huge, you know, a pickup truck, and will that fit through?
Yes.
Okay.
Will the parking of those Amtrak vehicles be on the Amtrak site or on the Westminster Parking Authority site?
The Amtrak site.
And will there be any other reserved parking spaces on the Westminster uh, Parking Authority site, such as for Westminster Parking Authority people or Amtrak or New Jersey Transit or anybody else?
No.
No, we, we don't anticipate we should have a reserve parking there. The reality is Amtrak will, that's part of the spacing, that the lot, for Amtrak department vehicles. And our neighbors, uh, us, we'll have an opportunity, most of the time our neighbors might need to do some road maintenance or some plant saving. And it's an easy walk for us, and we can also just pull in and actually double park off to the side where you'd be able to, you wouldn't be tripping any parking.
And the only reason I ask is on the wireless road lot, you have two spots or Westminster Parking Authority doesn't.
Yeah, and generally, it can pass what we've had is, the bad time, we have meetings with New Jersey Transit. The past one, we have an Apollo service, we have meetings with Amtrak, and we'll be doing more blockers, so we'll careers, we take up all spaces, and then the order members going into the office at ten o'clock, and we'd have a spot though. So we end up preserving spots, we end, we end up using those spots as we actually walk on the site quite often, to ensure that everything's up to the far rocks. Yeah, and for any of us, whether personally or any parking partner, like use this spot, so that it was never permanently like that, just have not clear the water closer. Because you know, the way you get in this field, the normal trip.
Johnson, yeah. Uh, uh. Where you had the, the, and the, the sites within a quarter mile of the Princeton Junction Train Station, it's just down a quarter mile from, from Wallace Road. So proposed, the applicants proposing a forty one space parking lot and a parking po, pocket park, sorry. Um, the pocket park will have a gazebo, picnic tables, bicycle lockers, and landscaping intended to screen the adjacent electrical substation. Um, and it's designed to mirror the pocket or the po, park on the opposite side of Wallace Road at four, at the PNC Bank. The parking lot is primarily to be used for a train station parking for the weekdays and a community gathering area during the weekends. It's envisioned that food trucks would be parked at the parking lot during the weekends to serve.
Okay, let's take that one a step further.
Okay.
Um, food, uh, a, a scenario, a Saturday event at the pocket park. And in this scenario, there will be food trucks. Where do the food trucks park?
That we'd have blocked off spaces before they.
Block off, so it would not, would not be entirely forty one spaces of parking for the event, because some of the spots would be with, for the food trucks, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, and then I'm going to ask another question on a, a different thing. You mentioned bicycle lockers. Why bicycle lockers at this particular location instead of just a bicycle rack? Why the lockers? I mean, lockers, I understand, at the commuter station, very understandable. But why lock bicycle lockers at this particular location?
Generally for security of the, the bicycles, if, if they wanted to bike to this and use the train station and actually, yeah.
Yeah. Realistically, it's the bus. Where you know, so MTA, they provide the bike lockers, has nothing to do with parking, but anyway, they'll be on the park. In a lot of respect, a bike lap or bike walker, you just want to have the up here, make your bikes and be there. People feel more comfortable if the bike is covered, so to be there for ever four hours, which is typically your time is. But it's on a weekend, and, you know, the people are really getting out of there.
Yeah, my concept would be that a bicycle commuter would want to park closer to the station and, and take advantage of the bicycle lockers that are already present at the Princeton Junction Train Station. I just think bicycle lockers are overkill, and I would suggest bicycle racks. I'd, I'd like to know my colleagues' thoughts on this.
Well, just a question on that, the, the current bicycle lockers that are at the, the daily, right?
Right, Andy will talk.
How, how occupied are they? Ninety percent filled on a daily basis? Does anybody know that?
More generally, that's controlled by greater worst.
I'm just curious, is, is, you know, how many lockers are there? Currently?
Forty.
And would you say on a daily basis, thirty nine of them are filled?
I also could say that you could go in, get there before about seven thirty, and they're there until late at night, so with the greater works of T and A, when they rent them out, they will like on their full.
Yeah, I'm curious about that. Uh, I'm curious, because when I used to commute daily, I'd never saw one bicycle ever use that locker in years. So, but I, you know, you know, maybe, that was a long time ago, you know, so.
I should sit there, it's not as.
Right.
That's the idea, that you couldn't see the type of bike you just try to steal it. I've seen people use it, and I've also seen it in the past, when they were using long weeks, so. We'd be happier to have a.
Here, here's kind of a compromise position, I think, that if it's found that the current number of bicycle lockers is less fifty percent or less being utilized, why put more in this new lot, is, you know, just common sense, you know, why add more that probably won't be used, because they'll want to put their bike closer to, you know, as stated, closer to where they're going to get on the train. If you find that thirty nine out of forty, you know, are occupied, then sure, we should have them, because I agree that bicycles should be covered and locked up, because if they're not visible, especially people using more e-bikes now.
Yeah, very fair. We'll talk there, maybe they should see what the volume is that they have, and if it's not.
Right, there's. Right, right. Right, and this space can, it's easier for you, and then, you know, the space will be less cluttered, because bike, uh, bike lockers take up more space.
I mean, and my whole approach is that a bicycle locker is for like longer term storage. And the pocket park, to me, seems like it's a day, a daytime use. Um, and that people who would park their bike at the pocket park would be for an event or activity at the pocket park. So that's why I, I, I'm reacting to bicycle.
You're a commuter, you're a commuter, and you're going, you're going to be parked there for ten or twelve hours. It could rain, it could snow, it wasn't, it wasn't happening when you left the house in the morning. You don't want your bicycle, especially if it's an e-bike, an expensive bike, you don't want it getting ruined, so I could see why you'd put in a locker.
Yeah, Michael, I would say that if I was of the, what you just described, I'd want to park my bike closer to train station, because coming southbound, there's, it's much more of a walk to get to this pocket park to retrieve the bicycle.
Agree, that's why I made the point of finding out what the octopus rate is, because if it's full every day, then sure, we should add.
That's what we'll do. If there aren't spaces available at the station, that would be a reason.
Right.
We can move on, we can move on.
Yes, okay, we killed this point, thank you.
Well, where, where do people park for the overflow for these commuting events?
The overflow?
Yeah, so Wallace.
Big front wheel.
There, I say, you know, it's a little bit of wall, but I guess so far right there. You know, listening to people envision something on a Saturday, on a Sunday, possibly, it could be just going to Ellsworth. They mentioned part of the PNC. They're actually part of a PNC. We'll have sufficient free parking in Wallace. And we're going to suggest it's going to be food trucks every weekend. It may have gone, we've done some food truck events in Harvard's block area.
One drive.
Right, a lot of work put together.
No, I'm not, I'm not thinking about a, of a, a food truck event. I'm thinking about just an event that you have a large crowd at your pocket park. And you have more than forty-one cars parked there to access that event.
Yeah, we have.
Okay.
And you'll have signage or something that says, park over Wallace.
Wallace is free on weekends.
But that's only free for Westminster Township residents. If somebody from Plainsboro or Princeton wants to come to your event, it's not free.
They'll park at the bank.
Okay, right, thank you, we can move on.
Uh, so the Parking Authority has been working with the Township Engineer to, with several grants for this project with NJDOT. Both of which are pending award. One is the Transit Village Grant, which is intended to help fund the pocket park portion of the uh, project and the other is Safe Streets to Transit, which is intended to help fund between this site and the train station entrance, some improvements to the sidewalks and crosswalks. Both Mercer County and NJDOT have provided letters of no interest for the, the entrances to Wallace Road for this project, as well as PRCC has made a jurisdictional determination that no review is required. The site, the site meets the district's bulk standards and no variance or waivers are requi- required for this. I can get into the technical, or the review comments where testimony was requested from the TRC. If we'd like.
Is there anything that our professionals presented that raised awareness to that you can't agree with or wanted?
No.
So everything in their comments, you, you're going to adhere to?
Yep.
Okay, so then we can move on.
Okay. The, so for the redevelopment plan, the testimony was, was requested for the redevelopment plan portion of this. The Township recently, as we said before, two ordinances to amend the Princeton Junction redevelopment plan and the plan, land use plan element for the RP nine district. And now these allow commuter parking as a permitted use for this area and, but it still keeps some of the, the goals that were originally in that redevelopment plan. The development is still um, going to be mirroring the public park and the screening the adjacent power plant. And we're still intending to convert this building into something that's more useful to the public. For the handicap spaces, it's notably, there's, there's no handicap spaces proposed for this site. In this site, but they are in the site plans for this where the Wallace permit lot will have a couple of spaces restripped to be handicapped spaces. The purpose of that is because if this is going to be mostly used for commuter parking, we want the handicap spaces closer to the train station. We have taken a look at survey data at the existing parking lot, the Wallace permit lot. And they, those spaces do meet ADA requirements. For stormwater, the site's actually going to be decreasing the amount of impervious surfaces and decreasing the amount of motor vehicle surfaces as the site's currently mostly gravel. Parking lot that was used for storing buses. And the site's actually smaller than an acre, so there's kind of no chance of this becoming a a major development for stormwater wise. For the driveway and circulation.
You can actually carry the mic in hand, it's, it can move. Cause this is being recorded.
This is a left, uh, left or right turn in, cars would be directed around. We will have arrows directing cars around, being able to park as they circulate through. If you were going to Amtrak, you would be making a right into this driveway access that goes to their site. And circulating around this way, they would, i- if you're exiting the site at this point, you would, you would be going to this exit driveway aisle. Or if you need to recirculate through this, you, you'd be able to make a left and recirculate. This longer driveway for the exit is intended to, to be able to allow a little bit of stacking if, as, as Wallace Road does get fairly busy. Especially during rush hour. There, you'd be able to fit about five cars along this, if this starts getting backed up. But both the entrance and exit would be right or left turn only, or right or, right or left turn.
Okay, thank you.
So it was mentioned in, in Francis's report and something I picked up even before I read Francis's report about uh, the picnic tables, that there should be a picnic table that has barrier-free access.
Yes, we, we.
And it sounds like you consent to that.
Yep.
But you're not consenting to providing a barrier-free parking spot. Is that my understanding?
So if we, we could, problem.
This parking space can't be a, a handicap space.
I would like you to explore providing a barrier-free parking space at this
Yep.
Uh, location. But I, I, so, okay, I'm an architect, first of all, a, a point of learning. People can have handicaps. Parking spots do not have handicaps, but parking spots and entries can be barrier-free, meaning that the person can, a, a person can go through without any barriers. So I, I, I've trained myself to use language of barrier-free in describing objects and things related to accessibility. So I always react against, you know, I always wince when I hear handicapped parking because a parking spot cannot be or is handicapped. Thanks for setting me up for that one, Jodega.
He's been waiting three years.
I've been waiting a lot of years to say that one. I don't know if I've ever said it in zoning.
As, as a point to, to that, if, if we do end up making that a barrier-free parking space, there will be you will be within ADA guidelines for the sidewalk getting to that.
Okay.
I think it's really important that people have a handicap parking space.
Thanks, Alan. Rub it in, Alan.
Okay.
I agree.
I, I have a question regarding your electric vehicle spaces. I read in the professional reports, one professional indicated that you had two electric vehicle parking spaces, another said three, so I wanted you to go on the record and ask you how many electric vehicle parking spaces do you have in this sporting unit?
Two, two.
Two?
Yes.
And will those be reserved for electric vehicles only?
Yes.
And they will obviously be required to charge their vehicles during that time period or not?
So these are also, they're, they're make-ready electric vehicle spaces. So they, they'll be wired to do that. It's not required to actually have the electrical charging spaces in.
Oh, so, so they're electric, they're reserved for electric vehicles, but you won't have charging stations? It'll just be pre-wired for some potential future use?
Yes.
Charging station right there. We, we, we commute a lot. Most people are parking for ten, twelve hours. They generally will charge at home, a charging garage or a night. Like Nelson, or like a mall or shopping area and they're in and out quick.
Right.
For commuters, they're there all day. We don't want them to be charging their vehicles.
Right, they're not going to be charging all day, they'll, you know, so it doesn't make any.
It takes up the space.
Takes up the space.
So, good point, Andy.
So if I have a, if I have an electric vehicle, which I do, and I park in your forty-one space lot, there are two spaces that I can park in because I have an electric vehicle, but I cannot use that spot to charge my vehicle.
Right now, we're only committing to having it readily available.
Right.
We're not committing yet how to want that, this aisle's on electric vehicle and I'm charging home.
Right.
I shouldn't be able to park closer if there's no charging. I, I should be the same as everyone else. I should have a park, everybody else's park.
So, all right, so just, I'm confused about it because, you know, the, the whole point of having an electric vehicle parking space is so you can charge your electric vehicle. But if you're pre-wired for it and you don't put a electric vehicle charging station there, then there's no, there's no difference between that and a regular vehicle.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not, it's an, it's not an electric vehicle spot. It's a regular spot that in the future may be converted to an electric vehicle space.
Need arises, if the need arises and a third party comes in and says, hey, I want to put in charging parking spaces there, those will be the two spaces that are available. For you as an electric vehicle, if you have planned going into the city, see a Broadway show and after dinner, you don't want to park there for seven hours, right? You want to charge your car at home.
Or I could charge it there.
Yeah, but you can't charge it there because it's not available, so I don't want you to get stuck and not get, be able to get home, so you should charge it in the morning. Okay, we cleared that up.
Yeah, it's just basically, we already talked about the bicycle lockers. The, the other thing that was requested testimony for was the pocket park size. What's required in the, the redevelopment plan is six thousand square feet. We're providing just over that, six thousand and fifty square feet. What, what, what's required is for picnic areas, we're, we're, we're showing five right now in the pocket park, but then there's also an additional four within the the parking lot and near the intersection of Wallace and Princeton Heights Town Road. And we are showing on our plans, street furnishings, planters, refuse containers and decorative thematic lighting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That is all that I have.
Any other witnesses? No?
Questions on that?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're going to turn over to our professionals. Now, you've already committed that any of their comments, they've already agreed to and, or, well, you, you, you're not required to follow, but it's nice that if they make a good recommendation that you go and say, hey, it makes sense. So, I want to move quickly through this, so Ed, if you want to you know, take, you know, go through and, you know, make your comments, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I'm filling in for Dave Novak as well, so I'll touch on planning and for the landscape architectural aspects. I concur with all the testimony that's been provided as to the zoning, the master plan, the land use plan, all of those provisions. I appreciate the applicant's willingness to address any of our questions. The only questions or comment maybe I would have is just to identify the signage that's provided on the property. If you can touch on that.
So, one of the things that we added to our plans since the last technical review committee was a meeting was a wayfinding sign, which is different uh, different from the monument sign that we were putting in the corner of Wallace and Princeton Heights Town Road. The, the purpose of that sign is, is more, more to just label the the name of this lot, which is currently undecided, but it's kind of consistent with the rest of the parking lots that Parking Authority owns around this and it kind of matched that style.
Okay, thank you. I didn't have, we didn't have any issue with regard to the wayfinding sign. It seems to make sense in addition to the overall Princeton Junction sign as well. And some of our landscape comments were inconsistent with the latest plans that you had provided. It looks like you really addressed a lot of our issues and comments that we may have had. And Mr. Chairman, I think that's, that's it with regard to the landscape.
Okay, we, we addressed the bicycle lockers, they'll do a review and whatever makes sense. And, you know, you, I know you want to do what makes sense and we want you to do what makes sense.
One thing I would offer is sometimes the bicycle lockers are helpful, especially today with people buying electrical bikes. They're so expensive that they like to see them.
Totally, totally agree, but if they have forty percent occupancy at the train station, might as well try to utilize those.
I agree as well, thank you.
Okay. Fran, anything that you need to address?
Uh, good evening. No, I don't believe that there's anything that I had touched on in the report issue that they have not covered already, so. Unless somebody has any questions or comments for me, it's, I have nothing additional to add or ask at this point.
Light, lighting plan is acceptable?
Uh, for, for what they're intending to do, yeah. There, there weren't any actual calculations of the average light levels, but I'm assume in keeping with the other parking facilities in the area, as long as they're not overly.
Still commercial there anyways.
Correct.
Okay, sometimes if it's residential across the street, they, they get upset about lighting. That's why I wanted to ask it. Okay, uh, thank you, Fran. Okay, Quasi, I'm interested in your.
Sure.
Take on the traffic.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Frank. My name is Quasi Masood, I'm a traffic engineer. Uh, and Aurora and Associates, we represent the Township Planning Board. Uh, we did have a conversation with the applicant and we exchanged some emails. We issued a letter on October twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five. Primarily, their comments were mostly related to the carb ramp, the type of carb ramps and also the tipicals as well as the detectable surface. We, I received an email from Reese Nordine and acknowledging all the comments that we had and they're going to address all the comments. And, yeah, other than that, there are two minor comments that I had, it's mostly relates to the labeling of the signage, the penalty plate, as well as the other one was you see the ADA, so based on the new MTCD standards, so I believe they will address all those.
Yeah, we will, and again.
I'm sorry.
We, we will also, assuming that the DOT awards the safe streets to transit. I'm, I'm assuming that the DOT would be interested in making sure that those kind of comments are addressed too.
Sure. Yeah, 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 that, the, you know, our base, our comments were based on the DOT standards, so we went by the standards for the DOT. Make sure the, those are compliant. That's all I have, Joe.
Just, I'll just make a quick comment regarding memo from Chief Lynch regarding the application. He basically says that this is for fire emergency services. Applicant has provided exhibit demonstrating adequate emergency vehicle access to the site and concludes the fire emergency services does not have any issues or objections with this application. So, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, have a good night. Um. No more questions. Sorry. Okay, next up. PB twenty-five dash oh seven, West Windsor Plainsboro High School South Courtesy Review for a carport. Photovoltaic system.
We'll take, we'll take.
We've been talking together, no?
Two separate schools, two separate schools.
Okay. Kids can take advantage of uh changes they grab. Yeah.
It is uh Clarkville, it's oh seven, right? Okay. That kind of moving along. Now I'm still working.
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Could you, could you move um? The exhibits around more pivot them so that. That that's great. Well, that that, no, that. No, no, th- this one. Both, 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 both. All right, that's that's good. Okay, great. Perfect, perfect.
Good evening.
Perfect.
Okay. Good evening. Sorry, I don't want to.
Okay, okay. Where you're moving. Okay, Ben.
All right.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Croker, Attorney at the Comegno Low Group. Here on behalf of the West Windsor Plainsboro Regional School District Board of Education, uh with me tonight. Have um Chris Rosati from um FWH Associates and Alex Berry. Uh Director of Engineering from Green Skies Energy. Um, so this is, we're here tonight for a courtesy or capital improvement review. Uh, I just, is the board's preference, I don't, I don't know if. For capital improvement reviews, you would um do you need me to swear in or or qualify the experts or um in terms of.
We we're we're not gonna swear you in because it's courtesy review. Can you just repeat your name again?
Sure, it's Brandon Croker.
Brandon Kroger, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, no swearing in because it's courtesy review, and basically you could take all our recommendations and not care about them. We hope you that you take into consideration what we recommend, but um, you know, we appreciate you being here.
Okay, absolutely. We we appreciate the opportunity. So we're here tonight for for two matters. They're they're both courtesy reviews. Um, they both concern solar facilities within. Our existing parking lots and one, one project is at the High School South and the other is at the Morris Hawk Elementary School and just. Um, so just for the record, it's so PB twenty-five dash oh seven is the High School South application. And PB twenty-five oh eight is more Morris Hawk Elementary School. It's that project. Um, and again, for the record, High School South is at. Three forty-six Clerksville Road, its block seventeen point one three, lot two, and it's located in the R twenty-four zone. That project, uh and I'm gonna ask um Mr. Rosati or Sperry to speak about it, but it's essentially a nine hundred and fifty-two kilowatt. Solar carport system within the existing parking lot. And again, for the record, the the Morris Hawk project uh is located at. Three oh three um dash three oh five Clerksville Road, that's block eleven. Lot one, and it's located in the R twenty-two. Um, and that's a two hundred and seventy kilowatt.
Okay, so you're gonna present um. Uh for both applications at the same time?
Oh, whatever the.
No, I I mean, I'm fine with that because they're both exactly the same thing, just different schools.
Okay, yeah, I mean, how would the board be like, we could separate them or?
No, no, I, no, I'd rather. You know, do it together.
Okay.
Let's maximize our time.
All right, fair enough. Um, so maybe now's a good time, I'll ask uh Mr. Rosati to to speak a little bit about the. Projects and explain to the board.
Sure, they're. Similar, but there's gonna be two several distinct differences that I'll touch on as we go through. Um, so they're both uh school parking lots. So you know what, we can. Real quick, we all know where they are. They're on uh Clerksville Road. Uh, the high south is in the right side of the exhibit. Maurice uh Hawk School is on the left side. Um. School, much larger array, one megawatt. Ru- um, nobody's talk about point, I go out. They are both up metered systems. Meaning that the um array does not supply one hundred percent of the of their uh electrical needs of each school. At times, there may be where the. Array exceeds the um requirements of the school. Not open, it's a really sunny day. Dead new. The array may, you know, produce a little bit more because no one's in there using it, but on the average throughout the year, it's not a. It will backfeed the grid at the time when the school's not. Taking that power, but other than that, it's not producer. We don't have a battery system for storage or anything like that. It's just a net metered. Um, carport arrays. One at the high school, one at the uh the other school, the Maurice Hawk School. As you can see, um, let's go real quick. I'm sorry. The the high school array are, we have two different kinds. We have a T, a T array, which you have a column in the middle. And the array itself is is gonna be tilted towards the sun in the shape of a T. On the edges of the property, we have a cantilever, right, which the bulk of the array is on one side of the column. With a a smaller part of the array on the other side of the column, so that's the only there. In the more. Situation, we have T arrays as well as this very large uh array, all as one system. Underneath. This array, there'll be a mixture of columns, different heights, because the array is tilted towards the sun. Uh, I believe this one's about a five-degree tilt, so you'll have a little bit taller columns on the high side, obviously, and then. The um columns are interspersed throughout the array. We don't know exactly where the columns are gonna be. Other than that they're gonna be at the head of parking stalls. Um, this has not been completed as yet. Typically, what we do is we come to the the boards, we get our planning approval, have you. And then when we go for building permits, that's when the real meat and potatoes get done with the structural design, the real hard line, electrical designs, et cetera. So. Let's see, let me make sure I hit on all the things. We did review the the um. The um professionals review, they all made good points, and I'll I'll address them as we go along. Um, each uh module is about seven feet by four feet. Um. The modules are wired together and there's gonna be um array-mounted inverters. The inverters convert DC current coming off the uh panels. To AC current, which then goes to the building. Once it hits that DC converter that or that inverter. Everything else is like normal electrical systems like you'd have in your house. So everything's under N E C code, everything is per code. Even down to the signage that we have to have on the on the array itself as far as shut-off locations, the heights of the um of the array elements, et cetera. Um, again, with the carports, they're gonna be built on steel frames. The uh steel frames will be on columns, the columns will be in the ground with supported with uh concrete like sonatube-type. Foundation elements. Our plan calls for a three-foot diameter. Typically, once that hard engineering and structural is done, it's a little bit smaller, but we are a little bit conservative. So that bulk it'll infringe on a parking stall about eighteen inches. So, yeah, I won't be able to park my F two fifty in one of those stalls. But I can just go to the one right next door and then it'll fit. Yes. Yes. There it's, it's existing parking and we're just putting carports on the existing parking. Both um schools have rooftop solar already, and this is just going to enhance what's already there in place. Um, minimum clear height is gonna be thirteen foot, six inches, and that's basically to clear, make sure school buses underneath, more importantly, emergency vehicles. You've got to make sure your fire apparatus can uh. Bring around the array. Um, the highest point on the. High school will be about sixteen feet, and on the other one, I believe it's about nineteen, because again, we have a large array. Coming across at that angle, it's just gonna be a little bit higher on the high side. Um. All panels will be fixed in place. Uh, parking lot lighting will be undermounted uh LED fixtures firing down onto the uh parking lot. There were, um, let's talk about the high school real quick. There was a comment in the professionals review letter, and it's well taken, because here tonight, I actually drove this. Perfectly dark night. On the uh easterly side of the parking lot where the arrays are going, there's a group of about eleven spots that are right now. Lit by a large stanchions where we're gonna be covering them up. So we're gonna be taking them down and putting down firing uh lighting. In this area, so we're gonna have to look at this when we change the lighting to make sure this area that's not under an array, to make sure it has adequate lighting. We might be able to move a couple lights here and that. A little bit more spilt there, but that's something that we'll definitely be looking at uh as a, from a safety uh perspective. Uh, there will be no additional impervious surface on either one. Yes. 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 Well, this is right here, where I'm pointing on the on the exhibit for the um for the high school. This is roughly twenty or so parking stalls. So it's gonna be over all of them. Now, if we go to the Maurice Hawk. Uh, there's this one, two, three, four rows of parking. It's gonna be a. Rad or large roof structure over that. Okay.
So keeping it on the Maurice Hawk plan.
Yes.
As you're talking about the location. Of the canopies. Um. What was the criteria that you? That led you to locate them where they are instead of other parts of the parking lot? For further away from the building?
You want to get as close to the building as possible if you can, because you have electrical feeds and conduit runs that have to go into the building. Um, it brings up an interesting point of one of the differences between hubs is at the high school, we're so far away from the school itself, we. Second transformer, because we have a lot of voltage loss from the uh switch equipment. To the tie-in point that we have to then step it up again. I had to keep it as close as we can to the school. Again, we have less uh conduit runs, less disturbance, less, you know, just less work, and it's 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 more economical.
And that leads to my other question. Um. Why is the second transformer located so far away closer to Penlile Road than at near to the site?
On.
Of your work. On, I'm looking at a doc page. Uh, of page on the uh. I've got it in the conduct, except it's uh. Page five, sheet five. Where you have the transformer number two located all the way. On the other side of the building.
Again, because. The distance that this electrical feed has to go, it might be more of an electrical engineering question, but again, due to the length of it. We have a lot of voltage loss, so then right before we combine into the building, it gets bumped up. So it's two, two transformers, just because we're so far away from where we're tying into the building itself.
To the point of connection to the building. And that that, all that conduit between transformers is totally underground, correct?
Yes, correct.
Are you not um putting these solar panels in the faculty lot because it's not uh? Uh. Pointed toward the sun or? Uh, you're just using the student lot?
A lot, a lot of the actual location of the array layout itself was developed through working directly with West and the regional. When we were going through the bidding process and working with them on the front side, they had a lot of preferences, and this is kind of not so vast, so. Um, in the development of this, we really just put in there the strengths. Noting what uh we just said about the efficiency of the system as well, but um really a lot of those. Specific. Layout experience we're directly talking.
Is the school district. Planning on? Doing this at their other schools? Or just here?
We will be in Plainsboro, hopefully in January for two schools, the one, the two on Grover's Mill Road across from each other. We have applications pending there as well. Oh, sure. No, well. Again. For a large, long vehicle, they may not be able to park every place. They'll have to choose which one, because there'll be columns interspersed. But as far as an overall loss of parking, it will be none. There will be no change to the ADA compliant spots. Um. With with the array construction either, so there's no disruption to existing parking. Yeah. Not that one specifically, but we've been involved in in many projects. We do a lot at at malls and and other facilities, and actually it becomes a very popular place to park. Especially when it's sunny out, because your car doesn't get a thousand degrees in the summertime. Um, even or in the winter, even when it's raining. Now, it's not a solid. Um. Surface where rain just sheets off, it's each, uh the rainwater will drip in between each panel. They're not. Touching each other. There's a little bit of 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 space in between, so the rain does drip through the panels. Snow is same thing. Uh, typically, the panels are about twenty degrees uh warmer than ambient temperature, so the snow melts a little bit quicker. Each one of these will have snow guards on them also, so you don't have that potential for, once the snow hits that. Critical mass or melt temperature where it just slides off, so we'll be uh preventing that as well. Well, we're gonna have um. Television, which basically is a a minute-by-minute monitoring of the system. So if there's anything that it shows at a panel or a string of panels is not functioning appropriately or where it should be. Then you can come out and take a look at it. Other than that, it's cleaning every once in a while. Um, it's, you know, really soap and water and some scrub brushes, honestly. Um, typically, what we say in the beginning, uh maintenance and equipments checks will be once a month for the initial troubleshoot troubleshooting, and then quarterly. And then at on an as-needed basis, because they can check remotely how the array is functioning, and obviously we'll want it functioning. Optimally constantly, so if there's a whole string out, someone will go out there, and typically the the uh maintenance vehicles are like a a work van or something like that. No large vehicles or anything uh of that nature. Yes, the, what was, some rooftop um solar. Yes, yes. Well, the other ones are already existing. So they're already in place. No, uh, I don't. Oh, they.
Being more loadout.
This is like the school district asking for these kind of problems.
Correct. We're getting through a power.
Are you planning on doing this installation? Say during the summer or school break or? Planning on doing it while the school's in session? And how do you plan on? Modifying the traffic pattern if you're proposing a part of a parking lot or closing an entire parking lot to put these. Uh carport devices in.
The goal is to do them during the summer. Um. That being said, another comment in the. Review letters was a staging plan, which we will offer uh at the time of building permit. That's to. And and planning department, where we're gonna be storing. Panel while they're waiting to get installed, where the trucks are gonna be going, that type of thing. Yes. Um. Being that it's gonna be during the summer, it's not gonna be that critical, but you know, it's, we should know where things are gonna be going and and how things are gonna get in and out. Uh, from a landscape perspective. Yes, sure.
But uh, if it is um, you know, if you. If it's um. Uh sooner, uh that's the age from the wood.
Yes, yes. No, it's the, it's the whole package altogether. Yes, yeah, there. Heating and air conditioning is the big one. So when it's warm out, you're never gonna meet it unless we have, I don't know. Several factors higher. several factors higher of of gray. Again, from a landscaping perspective, each job a little bit different. We we proposed on the Maurice Hawk School some plantings along the Clarksville Road frontage, but we called out one specific species. And the request was to not have my culture and to take them a little bit better. So we be with that and it makes some sense. We were showing green giant arborvitae and they were just going to get, you know, the suggestion was to remove several of them interspersed with different species to make it a nicer looking buffer.
At the time of planting of such landscaping, what would the planting height be? And I'm trying to think how long it's going to take to grow up.
Yeah, I probably I got to look at the plan, but we probably spec like five to six foot, but for green.
Time of planting.
Yeah, so green giant arborvitae in a nice environment, they're going to get big in several years.
Current arborvitae landscaping and berm on flexible road for the
Yes, so that
are going to be seen over top of that? Or do you anticipate the berm and the plantings to cover that as well?
Now, you'll you'll, well, the way the plant because they're not they're not that large. I think maybe they're about six to eight feet maybe at best. So you will, you will see it. The change in grade from parking lot to the road is only two or three feet. So it's really not that much different. But sticking to landscaping on the on the high school site, we have three trees that have to get removed due to shading and they'll be in the way of this cantilever array. We are of the understanding that we will need a permit for those removals. And we are showing in some additional plantings along the like the northwest corner of the entrance drive.
Some of the neighbors on the other side of Buck's not really, and what they may think about seeing carports over top of the landscape.
I mean, it's a it's a decent distance away. I mean, it's not going to be invisible by any means, and it is softened by the the existing vegetation. And as the vegetation does mature, it will help help that situation.
Well, I I think it's it's a preference over parking spaces. Right? They're shiny, they're new. Why not? See the roof of the car or or the shiny new object? I go with the shiny new object.
So tonight, we've looked at both the Morris Hawk property and the high school south property. Is it part of the strategic planning of the school district to maybe do this at the other three school district locations within West Windsor, Dutchneck, and the two properties along Village Road? Is that a part of a strategic plan or down the road or anything? No, 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 I'm talking about West Windsor.
I can't speak to that. I can't say that. So the BA of from the school district, he has a medical surgery, so it couldn't be here, but he did share that they they've received some calculations on their on their current arrays that are on the roof and they are, they're doing very well. That's why they want to.
At the other three West Windsor locations? Was that at the other three West Windsor locations?
Um, I'd have to, I mean, I just, in in general, the existing arrays that they have are, they're very pleased with how they're doing in terms of as part of their ESIP to the phrase or energy cost. And I I do not know the answer to that. I could find out, but I just, they're they're very happy and that's why they want to expand these projects. In terms of the the other schools in West Windsor, I could find out.
Have you looked at your energy bill lately? Of course, they've stolen solar. It's true. I'm not happy with my energy bill.
Costs do keep going up.
They they're going, they went up quite a bit. Okay, anything else?
One last item that was in the professionals review letter is when we put the columns in and design the columns to make sure that we avoid any subgrade infrastructure, the Maurice Hawk School, we're close to a stormwater pipe. We understand that. And any location will be adjusted accordingly.
Okay. Great. Now, you reviewed all our professional reports. Are there any issues with any of the recommendations they have or you know, you just disagree or?
No, I mean, they're all points that were well taken, especially the one with the lighting. Without that, I probably wouldn't have gone there tonight and looked at it and it was eye opening. The one thing I did notice also was it seems that the lighting intensity is fairly low at the site. So I think that might be a theme of of the town. We may be over lighting our array. So we'll be taking a look at that. I'll have our landscape architect take a look.
It might be lower because of all the residential around, but you know, yes, you got to, you'll have to look at that.
Because we can light that thing up pretty well because it's, you know, the reflective surface above us. We're firing straight down. We're about sixteen feet off the ground. If we're not careful, it can glow pretty brightly.
Someone walks through the parking lot with a flashlight. So they're not going to, they're going to be upset about bright lights.
Right. So just on for the record, I'll be, we'll be talking to our landscape architect staff to make sure that we're kind of
Okay. That makes sense.
In in the same mode of the rest of the of the facilities.
Right. Okay. Anything else?
Unless there's other questions on like general maintenance or anything like that.
Ed, you want to take the go first?
Yeah, certainly. I can walk the board through our comments just quickly with regard to the high school south and also the Morris Hawk School. Both of those are consistent with our land use plan and community facilities plan for the purposes of why they're here tonight with regard to getting that review before this board. But in addition to that, the applicant has obviously made changes and made adjustments to certain things. I was just going to ask you to clarify the maximum height of the panels as well as the clearance for buses or any larger vehicle.
Sure, the the minimum clearance we have is thirteen feet six. And the heights for, let's make sure I have my notes, for the Maurice Hawk, I have the the highest point being approximately nineteen feet above grade. And again, that's for the large for the large array. Because again, we have thirteen feet six on the low side. We're coming up at an angle over that larger distance. It's just going to be a little bit higher. And I believe on the high school, the max is going to be about sixteen feet. Again, with the minimum being thirteen point thirteen feet six inches.
Okay, and then that clearance would be high enough for the buses and circulation.
Yeah, basically, the per New Jersey regulations, the highest vehicle, even emergency vehicle is thirteen foot six. And that's typically your like fire aerial apparatus. And typically, that highest point is in the middle of it. And so we'll we'll be, the clearance is fine.
Clearance purposes, there won't be anything hanging down that might hit the
Okay, I appreciate your comments regarding the lighting. One of the things we were wondering is if there is a a timing of the intensity of the fixtures that could be worked into the plan or not, because with the LED fixtures nowadays, you can scale them down during the evening hours, things of that nature. So it's not too overlit.
Right, maybe it starts bright early and then dims down something to that.
It's a thought. Yeah, we can look into that. And also, I forgot to mention that the light timing will be coincident with the other lights of the sites.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
With regard to the screening for the high school, as I understand it, there might be a few arborvitae that have to be replaced. They may have died along the front edge. Would that be something that you would consider making those replacements as needed?
Sure.
There might only be a handful.
That's fine.
But right now, as the board was asking, what kind of view is there? I would say they're more like eight feet out there right now, believe it or not, in the landscape, they tend to look lower. But at the same time, I think they provide a fairly consistent screen along Clarksville Road. I think I appreciate the other trees that are being added as well. I know you had to take down the three trees along the south side, which leads me back to the Morris Hawk School. One of the things I may not have communicated very well in the review was just the eventual height of some of the trees. And it looks like they're all on the south side of the arrays. You may want to consider possibly even moving them back a little bit further.
Sure.
Like, for instance, the green giant get the forty to sixty feet tall. So you may get a pretty significant shadow from that in certain times of year. So just just future plans.
Absolutely.
In consideration of that. I think that's all the questions.
Okay.
Good evening. So listening to the discussion so far, there's there's not too much that has been touched on that hasn't been brought up in the report and vice versa. I do appreciate the comments about the lighting and the extra attention given, especially at High School South. The other things not talked about, just for the board's information, is that the improvement coverage really isn't affected and mostly with these going over existing parking, which is the preferred situation as opposed to covering green space with them. But even if they were covering green space, the municipal land use law doesn't allow the town to count that as an improvement coverage. Only the found permanent foundations would be counted. But in this case, there's there's no stormwater management required requirement triggered. I do appreciate the sensitivity to the underground infrastructure, making sure that still functions after installation of the foundation systems. But no, other than that, I don't, I don't have anything new that hasn't been brought up already.
Thank you. And again, everything, the recommendations have been addressed, right?
Yeah, all points very well.
Okay, great. I'll just read in for the record from Chief Lynch, Fire Emergency Services. Basically, for both sites, the proposed design does not impact fire department access to the site. So he gives his blessing. Any other questions for the?
My question.
Okay.
Question. Question is, what's typical useful?
Typical, it's about twenty five to thirty years, but I'll qualify that also. That doesn't stop your twenty five. If they're twenty five, thirty years, your efficiently efficiency goes down to maybe eighty to eighty five percent of what they were. And then it becomes a numbers game where does it make sense to replace them with new technology? And actually, one of the quote unquote recyclable ways to do it is they take those panels down and they bring them to somewhere else where they can't afford the really expensive panels. And they, you know, maybe out even out of the country and they'll reuse them somewhere else because they're still doing eighty percent of what they were designed to originally. Yes. Yeah. Sure.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Sam, what's the rest of the year look like? Seventeen, September seventeenth.
Meeting adjourned. Well, entertain a motion and close the public session. Motion to close the public session, anybody? Move by two, second by. Okay, Annis, okay, well, in favor, say aye.
So Alan, I didn't hear where it is tonight, but friend has given me.